All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order of October 2nd, 2024. A nice, uh...
Wet.
...twelfth day in a row, I think, or something like that. Anyway, uh, if we could establish a quorum, please?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Kirkner? Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Huff? Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Soysen? Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Warden?
Here.
Secretary Daley?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, please let the record reflect that five members are present and we do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had a chance to review, uh, the agenda?
Yes.
Can we get a motion for approval?
Should move, approve?
A second.
Second. Thank you. All right, Daphne, administrative reports.
Yes, I have, um, two things for you before we look at our 2025 meeting dates, which seems incredible that we're actually already there, but we are. Um, I just wanted to let you know, I know in previous meetings, we had been talking about the, um, Maryland APA conferences coming up. It's a joint conference with the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. Um, one thing that I'm going to forward to you all is information about training that's happening at that conference, but is also available online. So, um, the Maryland Department of Planning provides training for, um, especially for new planning commission members, but also anybody who wants, um, a refresher on things like, um, you know, the topics that they've listed out include foundations of planning, conference of planning, growth management tools, planning law and ethics, and roles and responsibilities of, uh, planning commissioners. Um, I will forward to you the, um, information and links for accessing that content online, um, in case anybody is interested in reviewing it at your own pace, or they also have a, um, a, an online course that you can take. Um, I don't know, I don't know the exact format of that, but it's kind of like a, a virtual course that you can sign up, same content. Um, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that'll be coming in case anybody wants to peruse the, um, the information that they're sharing. Okay, um, so let's take a look at our 2025 meeting dates. Um, I just want to be able to make sure that there aren't any major conflicts that we haven't foreseen. So as we go ahead and, um, reserve rooms and get prepared to, um, to hold the meetings, we're, we're working on the right schedule here. So you should have received a copy of the proposed meeting dates.
I don't know. I did not. We did not.
Did we not? Ooh. Um...
Can you share on the screen?
Let me see if I can get in there.
Thank you for thinking that we received the, because, you know, I just don't think we're that high up on the, uh...
Food chain?
On the food chain, yeah. It's a trickle-down information thing.
Okay. I thought I was connected to the network here. Well, we might need to, uh, do this at a future meeting then. Um, really, the only dates that I saw that were potential, um, dates that we would want to change or reconsider, um, the first Wednesday of January is January 1st. So, um, we can bump that meeting to the following week of January 8th, um, as an option. And then the only other one that seems to be kind of iffy is the, um, Wednesday, July 2nd. Um, of course, the 4th would be a Friday, but then that's sort of a question of whether that's a week when we potentially wouldn't have a quorum because people are traveling or what have you, so...
I do know that I will be on vacation for the 2nd, so I already know that I would not be able to make that one.
Okay.
So would you move that a week later as well?
We could either move it, or we could, um, cancel it again if it looks like, because I know a lot of travel plans occur in July, but, um, but we could move it.
I was, I was going to suggest move it because as the calendar has, you know, over the last few years, as things happen, we've canceled and changed dates and things like that, just as a placeholder.
Right.
So just to put something out there, make those two changes, and that would be a good start.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right, let's do that. So we'll move July 1 to January 8, and July 2 to July 9. Um, and then I'll send those, um, those dates out to you with the next set of information, and maybe at our, um, October 15th meeting, we can, um, formally approve that.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right. Any other?
I have no others.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to rural villages, a report overview presented by Andrew Gray. And I didn't know this, that the county has 35 rural villages.
That's a number, isn't it?
Yes.
That's a big number.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
You'll hear all about them in just a second. I just wanted to briefly, um, introduce this, so, um, we've been preparing a number of things that are, um, really kind of information bases or, um, uh, sets of data that hopefully can be informative to the master plan process. Um, the Rural Villages report is one of those companion pieces that, um, as Drew will describe for you, is meant to be, um, sort of a documentation. Um, it does, it's not a plan. It doesn't contain recommendations. It doesn't contain, um, planning level analysis that would suggest what needs to happen in these rural villages. It's really a reference document, um, but a reference particularly in terms of how it could inform your discussions around, uh, the master plan. So that's why we wanted to introduce it here, and, and there will be a number of other pieces, um, similar to this that we'll be introducing to you over the next, you know, several months, um, to help build up that base of, of information and knowledge.
Okay, great.
All right. All right, here we go. Oh, sorry.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, Planning Commission, it is wonderful to be in front of you today, um, and it is wonderful to be able to present the Rural Villages study. Um, many months of hard work went into, whoops, did this go through? Jumped ahead somehow. Many, um, months went through, many, sorry, uh, many months of hard work, um, built up for this study. Um, and I would all, before I get started, I would like to thank, um, Randolph Mitchell. Um, Randolph was with me, um, to every rural village, each of the 35. I think we were, uh, I felt like we were joined together at the hip, and it's, um, I, I, like I mentioned to Mary, um, before I started, well, before I came in the room here, that I sort of wish he was, he was here next to me since he was a very integral part of this project and, and bringing this study before you all. Um, I would also like to thank my colleagues, including Claire Stewart, um, for the work that was provided that was a good base for this study. All right. So what are the rural villages? Rural villages are small, primarily residential communities scattered throughout rural Carroll County. We all know these places from Lineboro to Melrose to Harney to Woodbine. They are all unique, and one of the things Bureau Chief Lane mentioned, that she wanted us to go to each rural village so we can experience them, so we know what they are like. It's one thing looking at them on the website, on a, on a mapping website, but nothing's like being right there and experiencing that place. Also, uh, throughout this presentation, as you can see on this slide, there will be photographs and fo- photographs and maps from each rural village. So, when and how were Carroll County's rural villages designated? They were designated in 1998. The project to start this was actually started by an, via intern in 1997. But with this project and to have rural villages designated in Carroll County, the county took into consideration state law, current geography, county maps, and also consulted county staff. Many factors also for the designation were considered, such as unincorporated areas in rural and agricultural areas, areas not within a designated growth area, like our eight, the county's eight municipalities, Freedom and Finksburg, and also areas for potential water and sewer issues, to name a few. Where are Carroll's 35 rural villages located? Well, they're mainly in western Carroll County, but they're located all throughout the county as demonstrated via this map. Um, here's a listing of each of the rural villages, and I'm just going to take some time to name them since collectively they are each the stars of this study. Uh, so going through Alicia, Bark Hill, Bruceville, Detour, Feasersburg, Frizzleburg, Gamber, Harney, Keemar, Keysville, Lineboro, Linwood, Lewisville, Maple Grove, Marston, Mayberry, McKinstry's Mill, Melrose, Middleburg, Miller's, Patapsico, Pleasant Valley, Shipley, Silver Run, Smallwood, Snyder'sburg, Starners Dam, Taylorsville, Tyrone, Union Mills, Union Town, Warfieldsburg, Watersville, Winfield, and Woodbine. To start out with, we wanted to ground the study in the comprehensive plan that this commission and the Board of County Commissioners adopted in 2014. One of the main things with the, um, or one of the main, um, items that the, the, um, comprehensive plan outlined was creating new land use designations for Carroll's rural villages of village residential and village commercial and induc- sorry, village commercial industrial, and also provided land policy related to information contained on this slide. Why this study? As Secretary Daley mentioned, this study will provide baseline information on the villages that will be reviewed during the development of drafts, draft recommendations for all to review and consider during the forthcoming county master plan development process, just like the economic development and land use study, the transportation master plan, and the housing study will, will do. Information collected, to start out, we reviewed satellite imagery before we took a, a visit to each village. After, we assigned an existing use of land and general land category and a more detailed subcategory for each property. Going through our, our field visits, we wrote down information on each village for every single property, and this is how much information we have, just to show the magnitude of what went into the study, all the properties in those 35 villages. Uh, we transferred all of this to Excel spreadsheets that, um, there's an, and there's an example right there on the slide. With that example, a color was assigned to each property based on the county's future land use map. I bel- I believe this was easier to visually analyze as you can quickly go down and see which would be commercial, industrial, residential, et cetera. So for the information on each of the county's rural villages, this is the information that was collected, and we will get a little bit more into detail through each of them. So for the background, we looked at the location, the size, public water and sewer availability, and any agricultural easements located around or inside the village. We also looked at historic sites, if they are available. Um, historic sites, uh, Mr. Mitchell got information off of our GIS, and we, um, inserted all that information, historic properties, historic points into, um, this subsection of the document. And an example is, whoops, example is, all right, Linwood. So in the, in the plan, um, some of the rural villages do not have information on historic properties, but in the case of Linwood, it does. And that's what, that's, uh, that's the example out of the study from Linwood. Also, the business environment, what are the general types of businesses located in each village? Also, the residential environment, single family, multifamily, et cetera. Public facilities and institu- institutions such as schools, churches, volunteer fire companies, and more. I do have to say that, um, looking in, look, looking at all the different, um, public facilities and institutions in our rural villages, Carroll County does have some wonderful, and I know you all know, wonderful public facilities. That bottom picture there, not to single anyone out in particular, but that bottom picture in Smallwood, I still call that the field of dreams. Who would not want to play in that stadium? I would. Land use, land use, the future land use, and what the land is generally mostly used for in each village. Also tourism, water trails and scenic byways. For example, in Detour, as you all most likely know, Detour has the Carroll, one of the Carroll County water trails accesses at Double Pipe Creek Park. It's a wonderful area to go, and I still want to go back and, uh, use that for kayaking, but it's just wonderful resources that we have, not only in our rural villages, but in the county in general. Also, transportation, our roads, this, this looks at our roads, um, also bike routes that go along the different roads, sidewalk availability in the village, and railroad. Uh, and also, we have sources. Each section of the rural village study has sources because we all want to make sure that any out, outside research is given credit. This is the end of my presentation, but I hope you all, um, take the opportunity, and if you have not already, to review the study, and if you have any questions, Mr. Chair or any commission member, please let me know, and thank you for your time.
Um, if I could just jump in, I want to add one thing to Drew's presentation that I think is, um, is helpful to keep in mind here. So one of his slides mentioned the fact that the, um, the rural villages are designated priority funding areas. So that was sort of the, the genesis of these, uh, designations. When the state created the priority funding area designation and asked all the, all of the counties, um, to designate those areas, uh, rural villages were a way of identifying the places outside of your primary designated growth areas where there may be an opportunity for or a need for state funding. So if you recall, um, the priority funding area designation helps the state funnel, um, the bulk of its resources to the places that are designed for growth or designated for growth. Um, but you, but they didn't want to leave out places that are, um, traditional communities that may need some, uh, state funding assistance at some point in the future because they are micro urban areas, you know? So that was sort of the reason why these areas were designated and, um, a reason why we want to keep them on the radar screen as we go into the master planning process because they are, um, sort of more dense communities and may have some need for things like, um, some, um, well or septic types of, uh, remediation if there are some issues because they're small lots and, um, uh, historic areas. Um, we also have, as some of our previous discussions have pointed out, a real desire to try to protect the rural and small-town character of the county, and these rural villages are, um, real great expressions of that character. So, um, this forms a good basis of information and knowledge that we can refer to as we contemplate if there are any, uh, any sorts of recommendations that, uh, we want to make related to, um, the rural villages specifically or communities outside of our designated growth areas in general.
So I, yeah, I had, I had a few questions, and one of them was about the funding because I noticed it's, uh, you know, they're small priority funding areas. So is that state-funded mostly, or combination county and state?
Yeah. Uh, I would add, do we have to put money forward to get money?
Apply or...
Match, whatever?
Um, well, it sort of depends on what...
What it is.
What the funding source may be that you're seeking. So, um, basically, what that designation does is, um, open up the possibility for state funding, whether that's, um, you know, in, in whole or in part, um, it, it makes certain areas eligible for consideration. Yeah.
So I take it that we're not, there's not a lot of funding that's going into these areas unless it's emergency funding for wells, septic, or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, there's not like a designated pot of money for redeveloping rural villages, for instance. But, yeah, it would be the kind of thing that would allow for certain limited improvements to, uh, be eligible for certain funding sources, depending on what it is that they're, that you're trying to accomplish.
Well, I would consider the, the park that you mentioned at Smallwood.
Mm-hmm.
Was that, was that through Rektin Park, and would, would that make any, um, any sense to mention or to put that in? Because that's certainly a rural village, but that park down there is really quite a park.
Really nice.
In the rural vill-
So, so what, what was the nexus for that, to put it there? Was it the surrounding area? Was it rural village aspect? Was it all the above?
Right, so, and that's a wonderful question, uh, Mr. Robinson. The reason why that is in there is because in each park, in each rural village, I wanted to include the parks. So that park in Small, in, sorry, in... So, that park in Small, in, sorry, in Deer Park, in, in Smallwood, that's in the rural village. So, that, that's why it's included in there, just like Big Pipe Creek, or sorry, Double Cr- Pipe Creek Park in Detour, and-
And Bark Hill, that would be, there's a park in Bark Hill.
I'm trying to-
It's just been, I think we just-
Oh, that we just looked at for, yeah, yeah.
We had a request about the trail, a walking trail at the Bark Hill Rect-
Yeah.
Park that's in Bark Hill. I guess that would be part of that, too.
Yeah, we'd have to do a little research to see when, when certain things were created relative to this designation to see if that, if the designation helped give it a boost or something like that.
It kind of makes sense. I mean, I, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
If we can tie it to, to that and-
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you have any sense of, I noted that the new growth would be infill development or limited peripheral expansion? Any idea of what that might be? I mean, what, is there a number associated with that?
Not, not that I saw, Mr. Kane, the, I believe with that mentioning, and please, Daphne, jump in if, if I go amiss, but when these were set, when these, when these were developed, it wasn't like these are going to be large growth areas. They were going to be smaller areas, they're more rural, you know, farming communities. And maybe if there's a, a greenfield site inside the rural village, that can develop into residential, lighter commercial. In the master plan, it does say not expanding of any industrial that's in there, but in my opinion, from reading that information out of the 2014 master plan, it is just, it's going to be small growth that takes into consideration the character, and like back to that sense of place of the village itself. So, not any large-
Right.
-factories that the plan called, just looking at the plan.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good, good report, lots of work.
Thank you.
I guess we should note that our chair has arrived.
Yes.
And she's thinking she came in on the tail end. But the good news is, my granddaughter was first and won the meet.
All right.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
What is this?
Cross country.
Where did they? Okay.
Nice.
Nice day to run.
Yes.
Mr. Gray, I want to ask you one more question about the rural villages.
Yes, sir.
Some of the rural villages are historical sites or historical villages, I guess. That can be a hindrance sometimes when you're talking about infill development. So, how, I mean, this probably is a, I hope it's not a, it's not a gotcha question, please, but how many of the rural villages are historical sites? Like, is Linwood, I know Union Town is. So, that's one in particular, and there's been, over the years, different conflicts, I'll put it that way, where there were certain things that wanted, maybe the, the town or a person who owned a lot could tear down an old building, put a nice new one up, and then the conflict occurs.
Right.
Are many of these villages designated as historical villages?
No, Mr. Robinson. The, the main village, and actually the only area that I know of, would be Union Town. Now, when I mentioned historical significance in there, we, we went to Maryland Historic Trust, the MedUSA, or Medusa, however that is styled. But to pull up information about that, like McKinstry's Mill, Lineboro, different ones have information on Maryland Historic Trust, but not necessarily an historic zone, has that historic zoning designation, like Union, oh, sorry, Union Town. Union Town is the only place I know of in this county that has that historical designation.
Hey, thank you.
Not a problem.
Prior to coming on this commission, I was on the Historic Preservation Commission, and their primarily focus is on, on Union Town. And, and to some degree, it's a little unfortunate, because one of their charges is to update that database. And when you go through the database, there are homes on there that frankly, they, they've fallen down, they've been bulldozed, and so it's just, it's just a, it's just, it's really a placeholder of information that something historical was once there. And it probably, you know, hasn't been revised since, there was, evidently, there was some energetic person here in our county who really got after it. You know, it's a three-bay home, it was built in, you know, he, he nailed it. I mean, but nothing has been updated since then. And so, I mean, in the Freedom District, there are 170 historical pieces of property. No, no, they're not. They're on the database, but they're, I mean, I don't mean to be dismissive of, but, but some of these homes, I mean, they're, they're not there. I mean, they're just, you, you go there and you're like, where is it? And it's not there, so-
We can ride through many of these villages of the 35 and say, wow, this would be a good place to have some infill something. And it would work very well. I mean, there were businesses in these villages at one time, of course, that was a lot different than where we are now, but, but you could just see the potential for upgrades in a lot of these rural villages. So, there's some real significance to this. I'm really glad you brought this up.
It's an opportunity for rural village data center with, with solar panels.
I'm okay with that.
So, I have a question. How large typically is a rural village?
Madam Chair, in acres, I am not 100% sure off the top of my head. I'm trying to think, when you think of, like Lineboro and Harney, a small one would be like Watersville down on the Howard County line. I just, in the, in the study, it mentions the acres, but I, I just don't know the average size off the top of my head, I apologize.
That's okay. Some of them are really just a small little collection, or, you know, a bona fide village. You know, it kind of spans.
Crossroads, yeah. Yeah, we had, gosh, a couple of years ago, we had a discussion of the intersection right there, Taylorsville, Route 26 and 27, the Four Corners, and that's a rural village.
Mm-hmm.
Because we were talking about something, and I forget who it was, said, oh, no, that, you can't talk about that because it's a rural village. I was like, oh, I didn't know, didn't know that. But, yeah, it's, that's small, that, that area's so small, but it's a rural village.
Yeah. And a lot of those properties that you talked about, Mr. Lester, that were inventoried for the, it's, it's for the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties.
Right.
That database, those were surveys that were done, a lot of them were accomplished by a grant-funded position that we had for a number of years, where we had a historic preservationist who did those field surveys and-
Awesome.
And wrote up all the inventory forms and all of that sort of stuff, and determined eligibility for the National Register and all those sorts of things. I don't think that we've had people available to do those kinds of things. And we'd, we'd have to look and see how much of the historic resources that we believe to be out in the county are still un-inventoried, but we have a fair number.
It's a lot. I mean, I, I was shocked. I mean, just, you know, in the, in one of the plans that, that you and your staff put forward, it mentioned a cemetery on a road-
Yeah.
That I run, I have run down, and, and when I was running, I don't run anymore. I had run down that road a lot, had no idea that there was a, I mean, it's back there in the, it's, it's wooded now, and, and the trees have fallen on the tombstones, and it's, it's a mess. I mean, you know, it, it's, but, but, again, it, it's cool that it's in the database and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, not revising it, and I don't know whether we could encourage the, let's come up with something for somebody else to do. I don't know whether we could encourage the Historic Preservation Commission to, you know, can you, you know, in, in this quarter, could you focus on the properties that are in this village and tell us what, if anything, is still historical there? You know, did it fall down? Is it still there? Is it, is it being well-maintained? I mean, just, just update it, you know, just in the villages alone. That might be an interesting thing for, that sounds academic. That might be a good thing to force to, to have as a, as a tool when we start, you know, making recommendations on things, well, is this, is this, you know, what are we doing to the historic nature of this village? Because again, it, it's shocking how many properties are on that inventory. It's cool, at the same time, it's cool.
So, Smallwood, that would be 32 and Deer Park particularly?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So, how far does that extend?
I believe to the east, it goes down to, I forgot the church's name, but it has that, like, picnic grove next to it.
Trinity.
Yeah, right there.
And then it goes past, north of the, the old church with the Maryland store in it, and I think it goes up maybe like equivalent of a block. And then south on 32, it goes just south, don't quote me on this, just south of the park. And that would be the extent. A lot of that village is actually north, when you go down Deer Park Road and you make a, a left, there's a, a large housing community down there that many homes are in, in the village.
On the backside of the baseball fields?
No. The other, Don-
Down 32?
Exactly, Don Avenue.
It goes way back, yeah.
Down the Kivler Road.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, right in the Kivler Road area, right?
I was making a right and not a left.
But I do not believe all those homes on Don are in the village. I would have to check the map.
There is some new stuff down through there, but, yeah, that would make sense.
I'm sorry you missed Medford.
Medford?
Medford is long gone. But, but Medford was in my neighborhood, and quite frankly, Medford was actually the first Walmart.
Hmm.
You could go to Medford, and it was actually the first shopping center in Carroll County back in the 20s and 30s.
Ah.
And it was owned by a senator, Senator Bale, and he created Medford Crossroads, there was a school there, blacksmith shop, a hardware store, a grocery store, you name it, it was at Medford. So, we called it the first Walmart. It's, it's now been devoured by the quarries out in Wakefield Valley area. It was quite a complex there, unbelievable.
Interesting. Thank you, thank you for sharing that, it's, that's interesting.
It was kind of neat, I, it, it, a lot of people referred, there's all kinds of memorabilia about it.
Ah.
It's sales, and it's quite, quite interesting, the story behind Medford Grocery Company. Just thought I'd mention it.
Good. Any other questions?
Nope, nobody. Okay.
We got a public comment.
I see one public, would you like to speak?
I'm working, thank you.
Okay. All right, then, and the master plan, work plan. So, Daphne, I believe you're up.
That's me. Let me just try to make this legible here. Okay, so, I shared with you at our joint work session with the county commissioners, I shared with you a high-level view of our work plan, sort of draft work plan, I'll call it. And I wanted to take an opportunity to really dig into it with you in detail now, because essentially what we're looking for is some consensus that this is the direction that you all want to take with undertaking the master plan update. So, if there are aspects of what, what's proposed here that you want to add to, or take away from, or provide some more detail on, that guidance would be really helpful for us, so that we can start rolling out some of these things and know that it's consistent with the process that you all would like to undertake, since ultimately, this is your, your undertaking and your, your project. So, what I thought I would do is walk us through, I'd like to walk through the high-level, quick, big picture first, and then we can go into each of the sections, but just so we kind of get the, the full, the full scope of things here. So, the way this is laid out is by primary tasks. So, we have in the first section, the, the 1.0 group of things are what I refer to as output. So, these would be the, the things that we're communicating out to people. So, that's, that's the, the web presence, the social media, the actual written documents or community engagement tables, those kinds of things. That's the output. The 2.0 items are what I'm calling the input. So, those are the consultations that we would undertake as part of this process. This is really where a lot of the meat of the, of the work happens, so who are we talking to? How are we getting feedback? How are you talking to the Board of Commissioners and the other stakeholders that are involved in this? How are we getting a community input and engagement throughout the process? And then, if you flip to the back, the last part of that are the required public meetings and hearings. So, we are required by state law to do certain things, and those are built into this process as well. And then the 3.0, 4.0, and 5.0 sections are kind of the putting together of the plan. So, generally speaking, I think we want to have a blitz of input at the very beginning, so we have a sense of kind of where people are with things and, and how they feel about what our starting point is here, where we're seeing some good momentum around issues that need to be addressed. And then the, the actual putting together of the plan involves sifting through all of that, going through the, the debates and the discussions about what kinds of recommendations you all want to propose based on what you're hearing, where some of those, where some of those trade-offs may need to be made, or some compromises sought when we have competing goods, basically, things that we want to accomplish, but we can't accomplish everything. So, and then, of course, there's the, the final, the final work of outlining an implementation plan, how, how the plan would actually then get activated, and then that's part of that last phase of the plan development process. So, that's sort of the high level. What I've tried to do here with this proposal is build in lots of moments throughout the entire process, where we're engaging people, where we're touching back to see, you know, how are we doing here? Is this reflecting what you all have shared with us? And by you all, I mean, any of the stakeholders that we engage. So, the general public in, in large public meetings, or in smaller focus group type meetings, or, or things like, we've talked about needing to reach out to the municipalities and engage in some discussions with them. So, that's, we want to be able to just continually circle around with everybody that we're, that we're reaching out to and kind of see throughout this process, how are we doing? Is it reflecting what, what, the direction that we want to go? All right, so that's the high level. Any questions until, before we start digging into the specifics?
I do have a question. And so, based on, you know, what you know about our plan, and what you and your staff have discussed, and input you've gotten from us, and- and what you and your staff have discussed and input you've gotten from us and the Board of County Commissioners, what's the best way for you to do this? Are you going to, are we going to start from scratch and rewrite it like it, like it didn't exist? Or are we going to update it and get a revision? Would, would, how do you see this being, what's, I have a preconceived idea and I've talked with you about it. But, you know, now that you've taken in all the input and including what I said, have said to you, what, what do you, what, how do you envision this going? Is it going to be a, is it going to be an edit of what's existing or is it going to be a redo? What do you think? What's the best?
I think, so, you've mentioned to me the idea of possibly doing sort of a redlined version of the existing plan. And we have looked at that possibility. Our opinion is that that would be incredibly difficult to do given the amount of information that needs to be updated. The, the new elements that we need to include. So, for instance, the housing elements, all-new element. But then also, we've been talking about the fact that in particular, the Freedom area and the Finkburg area, which currently have their own standalone plan documents. We've talked about trying to integrate them into the county master plan. And so, to do a red line of a document that's rolling two documents into it and incorporating new material and updating all the data and everything like that, I think would be very difficult. At the same time, we've, we've also talked about ways that we could provide some way of comparing wherever you end up with things with what's currently adopted. That could be something like focusing not on the entire body of the, of the plan document, but maybe focusing in on the recommendations that were made. So, we had, I think it was ninety-four different recommendations. So, we can look at all of those and see which ones, for instance, have been accomplished. And so, therefore, we don't need to, or we can, you know, mark as complete. Which ones are sort of like ongoing things? And then the question is if they're ongoing, for instance, a recommendation to continue to do such-and-such or maintain such-and-such, then we can talk about whether that's something you want to carry over into the new plan. So, going through the recommendations and kind of demonstrating which ones either are complete, are being carried over, or for whatever reason are not relevant or not desired anymore. And that may be a way to maintain some accountability to the currently adopted plan without getting into the, you know, the, the messiness of trying to bring all of these things together in a red-line document.
Well, I thank you, that, that's a great answer and I thank you for contemplating what I said because again, the thing that I heard the last time was, and, and I don't know how valid the complaint was, but was, you know, every time we see this thing, we were having to compare it to the last document and we can't keep up. It's, it's, this is a full-time job trying to keep up because y'all, it was, it was changing so dramatically. So, thank you for considering that and, and, and you and your team, you and, yeah, y'all, any way you can come up, anything you can do to simplify the public's ability to digest what it is we're doing and not doing, I think is a great thing because that was the, the, that was the noise I heard. And, and y'all may have heard other things, but, but it was just really hard for us to, golly Moses, there's another one? There's a revision to the revision to the revision? Golly Moses, you know, so you had to sit there and it wasn't redlined because you couldn't, you couldn't compare the document.
Yeah.
Peter, I think last, the last time, I was kind of on the other side of the coin. I was working within the county the last time the revision took place. I think the whole, the mindset, the environment was different. I think that there was a, a changing of the guard that thought that there should be some wholesale changes made, which confused things a lot. That was a little bit different environment that we're under today. And I'm, I'm really glad you brought this up because it kind of gives us a focus on maybe what not to do based on the last time around.
But, you know, and, and that's great too, but I, I'll, I'll say this too, you know, we got to follow you, right? I mean, you're the pro. And, and, you know, to some degree, you know, not to a degree, you've been hired to do something here. So, you know, I, I want to turn you loose and let you do the best you can, right? And so, that's, that's my desire.
And that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, good.
Now, I, I do have a question about your spreadsheet. And let's go to two-point-one-six where it says joint work, work session with towns. I see where that's the only question mark you have on this entire spreadsheet.
I thought there was another one somewhere.
If it is, I thought this was the most important one.
Yeah.
What, what do you envision that being? Us meeting with the, the major players of, say, Tawny Town, Westminster, Sykesville,
Hampstead.
Hampstead, Manchester, individually or in a group setting? I mean, what, where are we at? Because, and, and why I ask this question? After the last meeting we had, I had a person come up to me, made a very valid point. And they said to me, when we're talking about future development or infill or affordable housing or all this, the statement was made, make sure you don't dump all this on this, on the municipalities. And I, I took that to heart. So, I think it would be very important to understand what the mindset of the municipalities are. When I look at, at Tawny Town, I see an explosion up there. It just is. And I'm wondering, you know, if that is their mindset moving forward for how many, the next ten years in this plan? Where is Westminster in its capacity to do some of the things that we've been talking about? I think this is really, really, really an important element in all of this. So, I, I just want your thoughts on that. I, I noticed the question mark, I have that same, my question mark's a little bit bigger than yours.
Yeah. Well, so, the, the question marks are around who are we meeting with? And how often we want to meet with them? I mean, then of course, there's the big questions like what are we actually talking about and, and that sort of thing? But, but you know, we have a few different layers. As with, as with, you know, we had this joint work session with the commissioners and the planning commission because we, we recognize that everybody has a vested interest in this. As, as the planning commission, you all are, are given the authority by the state to be the body that undertakes this, this planning process. But ultimately, it's the Board of County Commissioners who are going to adopt it. So, when we get into the towns, we're talking about multiple levels there too, right? You have the elected officials, the town council, mayors. Each of them has their own planning commission. And of course, then we frequently have a lot of interaction, staff to, staff to staff. So, that's where my question is, if we're having some joint work sessions with the towns, at what level is that happening? Or maybe it's happening at all of those levels? And we have to figure out how we want to orchestrate those kinds of conversations? Is it planning commission talking to planning commission? Is it elected officials talking elected officials? Is it, is it everybody all getting together in, in one big giant conversation? Is it one town at a time? Is it multiple, like, let's say we've got all the elected officials coming together as, as one big meeting?
You, you asked for ideas and, and I think that's what this session's about.
Absolutely.
And, and maybe I look at it a little differently, but we now have five commissioners that work in the five different areas. I think it would be, and I, I don't mind dumping this on you, Tom, at all. But I would like to know, certainly they, the commissioners have feedback on what each area, Manchester, Hampstead and one district and Westminster and your district and what, what their concept of the future of these municipalities are. Then move down to the mayor and council of each one of those and see if they, if they jive.
Right.
If, if the representation is there and they're on the same page, I think that would be so helpful for us in moving forward.
That's one of the notes I wrote down for this evening's meeting was the municipalities. And how's that all coordinated and communicated? And is the timing, does it all line up with the county timing? Do they have this? Are they working on the similar document or they, no?
Not yet.
Right, so, but they need to be thinking about it. And so, just to coordinate, so that, everybody starts off the same page at least? And they, they're, they're going to have their ideas, probably eight of them, eight different ideas. But that's okay because they're different, they're different parts of the county. They have different wants and needs and all that kind of thing. So, but that would be a great starting point to get, get feedback from those folks and get everybody in the same room, the commissioners, whether it's some of us as well, whatever, to, at the beginning of this. So, we're all, you know, launching on the same process and the same thought process and timeline and things like that.
Well, the, the hard thing about this is, is when you think about it, is that, you know, the needs of, I don't know, the, the needs of Westminster are going to be a lot different from, 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 from a lot of those other municipalities that we're talking about. And so, you would hate to think that by putting all of them in the same room, that there'd be a group think outcome when, you know, that's not what anybody intended. Because, you know, Westminster, Westminster has a voice, everybody's got a voice. You know, how do you, how do you, and that's the art of it, I guess, is, is how do, how do you get that feedback without shutting it down? Because you want to know, what, what do you think?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You're correct and obviously, you know, Tawny Town, Westminster are different as is, say, Mount Airy or any of the other areas. So, you know, and I don't want to be too deep on too many meetings, but I almost wonder if there shouldn't be at least one initial meeting with each of the eight because they're so different. Because to your point, is there group think? Or do we run into a situation, and I don't mean this to come across negatively, but does one group become a little more vocal than another in a meeting and certain things aren't brought up? And that does happen, you know, you know, the last thing I want to see is Tawny Town not get to bring up X or Mount Airy not bring up Y. So, I almost wonder if we don't need a significant, maybe not significant number of meetings, but a number of meetings, be it, you know, with the individual towns or municipalities and then go from there and kind of break it down. Is there a meeting where it's the elected commissioners and the elected municipalities all within the same group? And, you know, we obviously can meet with them within just that individual town. You know, how do we want to, you know, what's the best way to approach that? Because I think it's going to be several meetings in an overall, whether it's individually and then we have one giant meeting.
I, I think you have to break it down.
I think so too.
One step at a time. You have to break it down. And you said it, they're, they're all different, they're all going to have different ideas. I do think the group thing, group think, thing, aspect, thank you, is real. And, you know, you get, you get the big heavy hitters in there, the Westministers, you know, I'm not saying they would do it, but, you know, the, the people just shut down when they're like, oh, I'm here with the mayor of Westminster and, you know, what do I know? You know, that kind of thing. So, but I think that's smart to do it that way. I, I would also suggest that in preparation for those meetings, that they don't just come to the meeting unprepared. This meeting is about X, Y, Z, you know, it's the ten-year plan time. What, what's your vision? What are your needs? What do you see on your horizons and your communities? And come prepared.
Yeah, I agree.
Instead of just starting, because then you're, you're just going to spin out for a while. But, so they have to invest some time in the beginning of it to get prepared and ready for those conversations.
So, you're suggesting one meeting?
Individual.
To, to bring, to say, this is what we're going to do. This is what we need you to do as we work through this plan and move forward. So, we have your ideas.
Does that need to be a meeting?
Does it need to be a meeting or could that just be an individual conference call with each of the municipalities or something in a half an hour?
And I think, I think for, one, the sake of time, since we do have such a huge project we're working on. But then, two, we've had our individual meeting as planning and zoning. We've had the individual meeting as Board of County Commissioners. We've now had a joint meeting. I think for just usage of time and everybody involved, I think your idea might be the wisest given that we're not then all reliving the initial overview.
Right, right.
So, a, I heard a couple of different things. I want to make sure I understand where we are with things. I definitely heard we want to do something with the towns individually. Perhaps, did I also hear support for basically sending out some kind of a communication saying, here's what we'd like to talk about? Doing that ahead of time so that we give them, I don't know what it is, a month or whatever it is to kind of figure out how they want to respond to like these key questions that will frame the discussion around? And then have a, have a meeting with the, each individual town. Now, my question is, is this, Commissioner Gordon, I thought I heard you say electeds and electids.
I almost wonder, and I mean, I'm just speaking out loud, by all means, anybody jump in. Because more information and thoughts is always better. I kind of wonder if there shouldn't be at least one meeting where it's mostly the elected within its own? And then I kind of wondered, just to follow on that.
A kickoff meeting.
Yes. But then I also wonder, would it, would it be, and by anybody jump in, would it be worth having the various municipalities and their planning and zoning meet with the county planning and zoning as a separate meeting? Because I feel like there's going to be more of a...
Give it to.
Yes.
Agreed totally. I, 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 I think what you're saying...
Yeah, if we're putting together...
And they'll talk, they'll say things probably not in front of their mayor or commissioner or whatever.
Well, I'm not even thinking along the lines of that. I'm just thinking that, you know, it's, it's similar bodies, be one county, be the other eight, you know, be the municipal.
Well, if we're, if we're trying to put together a ten-year plan, I think we should, it would be fair to ask each municipality, what is your ten-year plan?
I agree.
That would, so you've got planners in the, in, that sit in the municipalities or you have the, the council, or you have the mayor. You've got all, all kinds of levels here of, of certain parts of expertise. And so, I think we can define this down so it's not a hectic.
They're not going to have their plan done.
No, but I'd like to know their expectations.
What's your vision, expectation of the ten-year plan so that we can at least be...
And, and that's the word. I mean, in all seriousness, I, 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 I want to understand what their vision is for their town.
Right.
And are we helping, hindering?
Right.
Are we, you know, how do we enable that vision? Because that's what they want, right? So, yeah, I, I, I think it's all about vision. And make, because, and again, it, it's made, the vision that each town has may be a little bit, there are going to be some commonalities, but there should be some differences, you would hope. And that, how, how do we help them achieve that with whatever it is we do with our plan?
And that, some of those unique things, unique... And that, some of those unique things, unique items could be part of the county.
Yep.
Master plan, so we're all.
And that, that helps us prioritize everything.
Yes.
So I will say that each municipality does have a plan. Um, some of them have been updated more recently than others. In fact, some are actively being updated, so for instance, um, the town of Union Bridge and the town of Mount Airy are both in the kind of final stages of, um, completing their.
That's perfect.
Conference of plan updates. So one of the things that I'm thinking is maybe we could, we could facilitate, um, the conversations between the elected officials, sort of on a, um, like that macro scale, what are the things that are, um, that are most important to you right now? What are you trying to achieve, where can we, um, where can we have some, find some mutual support, that kind of thing? Um, and then maybe at the same time, or maybe shortly thereafter, we could, uh, see if somebody from the town, whether it's, maybe it's a, a, a town staff person and their planning commission chair or something like that, could come to one of, uh, your meetings and give you kind of an overview of what their current plan is, or what sort of issues, where there's some, some overlap of, of issues or.
Definitely, that's great, because again, that, that way it's not being filtered, we're hearing it direct, they've had time to digest it. That, you, that's perfect, and then they come, and they, you know, they're not kissing anybody's ring, but that way we get to hear from them without it being filtered. What it is, you know, how's it working, is, is, what's broken, what's, what's working well? And, and do we have all of our oars in the water and are we, are we rowing the right direction?
Right.
How many different analogies can I put into one? Thank you.
Um, okay. Yeah, I like that. So we have, um, so there are a couple of things that I can do to, um, well, one thing that I noticed that I didn't do on here that I need to do is this, um, this item that Mr. Robertson pointed out, um, I also need to sort of replicate under the planning commission section of things. So, um, so I will do that. And then we can also play around with when exactly those would happen, based on, um, based on availability and, um, yeah, mostly based on availability, but I feel like we wanna do that fairly early in our process.
Yes.
Um, because that's gonna be a major point of information in terms of any big ideas that we might want to put forth for directing growth to our designated growth areas and that kind of thing. Um, now I will say, just, uh, just FYI, next meeting, so the October fifteenth meeting, um, we're working on information to share with you all related to our buildable land inventory. So this was something that came up at the joint work session about, do we know how much development potential there even is out there? And the answer is yes, we at least have a, um, an estimate, and it is a, an estimate. But we wanted to.
I'm sorry, Daphne, does that include commercial?
Yes. Yep. So we wanted to give you that overview, um, uh, just so you have that kind of in the back of your minds. But that will also then feed into these discussions with the municipalities, cause you'll have some information at that point about the growth potential within each municipality and their designated growth area. Um, which ones have, um, we're also gonna try to bring you some information related to, uh, water and sewer planning in general. Not the water and sewer master plan, although that's kind of a compendium of that information. But more, um, what are some of the opportunities and limitations that our public water and wastewater systems have on development potential? Because they kinda go hand in hand.
As in concurrency management?
Concurrent management, but also, yeah, well, yeah, but also just what are our, uh, do we have, um, real ceilings in terms of, um, permissible capacity and, um, and the ability to even plan for more growth?
Oh, status report on.
Daphne, uh, just a quick, I don't wanna dig too deep here, but just to clarify this for me, I guess, concurrency management, is that just a three-pronged approach? Schools, septic and water? What are, are there other criteria that, that plays into the concurrency management guidelines that are in place here in Carroll County?
I mean, we also test for fire and EMS, um.
Police?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know about roads, but that potential, yeah, potentially could be.
Chris is saying yes back there.
Yeah, some of, now, the schools is always the one that we seem to hit the most, um, roadblocks with. But there was a day when, um, things like fire and EMS was, was the primary driver in some of those, um, whether, whether development proposals were meeting the thresholds or not.
So right now, our biggest, the biggest one, the, the head of the snake, I guess, is the school system as far as concurrency management.
Uh, that's the one that we mostly have, yeah, some.
That's where we're running.
I think we see some fire that are.
Close.
Yes, some of the response times are maybe.
And we're working on that pretty hard right now.
Right.
Okay.
So when, and, and it's all gonna be done at the same time, but the committees that you're gonna get together, um, it looks like there will be quite a few. Is that what I'm seeing or there?
Yeah, so that's another, um, question that I really wanted to get your thoughts on. So we're talking about, let's see, on, on this input section, um, two point three, two point four primarily. So, um, what I'm suggesting is a, um, well, under two point three, an internal coordinating committee, so this would be a way for us to, um, communicate with people within the county government. So the different departments and agencies in county government who have, uh, their finger on the pulse of some of the things, like schools, like roads, like, um, uh, some of our, uh, citizen services and, and things like that. Just kind of to keep everybody in the loop on ideas that are bubbling up from the master plan discussions to see what information they can share that we can bring back to you. Um, or maybe even things that, that are on their radar screen as, um, potential conflicts or things that they wanna make sure, um, you all know about, so that we're not creating, uh, a recommendation for something that, um, they know is gonna change, you know, in the, in the near future or something. I don't know what that would be, but I think the more people that are in the loop, the better and the, and the more chance we have for, um, for avoiding conflicts, but also, um, I think it's really important to involve uh, folks from all of the different county agencies, because quite often, they are the implementers of these recommendations. So the more invested they are in them, the more they're aware of what's being proposed and, and have, um, had an opportunity to kinda help shape those recommendations, the better. Um, so that's one thing, uh, those are really just sort of internal types of, um, types of meetings, but I'll certainly be able to report out, um, anything that comes out of those. The other is the, the two point four, these are the focus group conversations. And, um, here's my idea with this. Um, I think we have an opportunity to have some really meaningful, um, input discussions with people if we are trying to reach out to folks at a, at a hyper local level, so, um, so that's what I call these affinity groups. I don't know what those are, I'm looking for your, um, for your feedback on that, but I'm thinking, you know, uh, as, as certain, um, citizen group that meets down in South Carroll once a month or, or something like that, and that would be a really great group to just go to and have some, um, have some one-on-one conversations about what they think are the pressing issues and, and some ideas for addressing them. Um, doing that all around the county in a way that, um, makes it, number one, accessible for folks, um, in their local areas. So we're not asking them to schlep up to Westminster on a rainy Wednesday night. But we have the chance to have a, a, a really good conversation in a comfortable setting, um, with folks, um, close to where they live. There is a time and a place for the large public meetings and the, and the back and forth with people in, um, either formal public hearings or in, um, maybe larger workshops or open houses, and that's part of what we're proposing here as well. But I think a lot of times people are more comfortable offering their feedback in, um, settings that they are familiar with, among people that they're familiar with, um, they're not getting, um, talked over or, uh, or feel intimidated by large crowds or whatever. So I'd like to try to see if there are, um, certain groups that we can go out to with basically a, I wanna call it a road show, but, you know, some, some specific discussion questions that we can just sit down and get their feedback from, from these small, small group settings.
Farm Bureau.
All right.
And, um, I, I could ask you this, um, the Farm Bureau annual banquet's coming up next month, I think it is, right, Tom?
Yes.
Um, it may be appropriate, and I'd be glad to do it, is just to stand up and make an announcement that we are working on the county master plan. And, you know, be aware of it, if there's any input that anybody wants to, to add. Just so that people are aware of it. Um, and the Farm Bureau has a, a monthly board meeting. So that would be another venue that you could maybe start this conversation on, so, yeah, I think that's a great idea, Daphne. The Farm Bureau comes to my mind, cause, well, that's where I am. Their banquet is, usually draws a few hundred people.
Oh, okay.
Out of Pleasant Valley, and so it'd be a great venue just to mention it.
Yeah, for sure.
And put it on the radar.
Thank you.
I would think, another group I would think would be the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I'm not exactly sure of an event they've got coming up where that would be easily viable. They just had a gala, I think, about a month ago. Actually, I take that back, there might be a breakfast event they've got coming up in a couple of weeks, that might be an opportunity.
Okay.
I think the Realtors, we have a trade show, a general meeting, I think it's November first. So we can bring it up there.
Yeah, we're actually gonna have a table there, well, the whole Department of Planning and Land Management, but, um, we can have some master plan related things there as well, but, um, yeah, this is actually something similar to what we did with the, um, the housing study, that I thought was very effective. We had some online meetings, so that's another way to make it more accessible to people. And we, I thought the, it was, the small conversation that we had with the, the Realtors, was incredibly insightful and I think really helpful to understanding, um, the housing issue from the Realtor's perspective. And I think that's what we're, we're trying to take that similar model and say, you know, what are the, um, and the planning and land use types of issues, the community types of issues, that are relevant to people and just getting their perspective on them. To, um, feed into, uh, this whole process and, and have that voice heard.
How do we, uh, you know, thinking along that line, how do we get, uh, with or solicit information from or have a conversation with the, um, the, uh, the developers and the builders?
I'm not, they used to have a, like a builder group.
Yeah.
Um, home builders. I'm not sure if Carroll County still has one, but, um, a lot of the Realtors, of course, work with some. So I think both can go hand in hand. We can certainly get information out to them. I guess fire, um, or senior living would probably be one to look at. I think they have some meetings, like maybe monthly, quarterly, I'm not sure. My daughter has some assisted living, so.
Okay.
I can ask.
We've tried to identify some ways to, um, reach some other demographics, I guess, um, that maybe are, are hard to reach, so for instance, we've got a couple of ideas for ways to involve, um, young people in this process. Whether that's, uh, reaching out to maybe high school leadership clubs or folks who have shown an interest in civic types of, um, engagement questions. Maybe it's, uh, maybe it's reaching out to the Boys and Girls Club or scouting groups or anything like that, that we could get some, um, some engagement from younger folks in. Of course, those, the questions that we ask them or what we're seeking input on from them would be different than reaching out to, say, the Farm Bureau, but, um, but some ways to get, uh, some representation from, um, that demographic, I think would be, would be helpful. As well as, uh, so we have a, um, a set of maps and tools and stuff like that, that we can, um, deploy at various events wherever, wherever they are. Um, just to engage people who are sort of already out and about. So we, we were at the, um, Aging Your Way Expo, um, a couple of weeks ago. And we're looking for, I, um, other community events that are sort of already happening, that we could, um, set up a table at, and so as people are strolling along and doing their thing, we can answer questions they might have or get some feedback from them, um, just sort of on the, on the fly. And we can feed that back into this process as well.
I think, um, the Home and Garden Show is at the Ag Center. I'm not sure exactly when. I know spring, I think. Um, but that would probably be a good venue.
Okay, great.
You know, we have a, a pretty big event coming up uh in a few weeks. Presidential election. And it's gonna be really, I'm on the uh, I'm a judge for the elections and um.
I'll see you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll see you again. The, the uh, it's gonna be busy. It's gonna be crazy. Now, I don't, that just popped in my head. So I have no idea where I'm going with this. So, but there's gonna be a ton of resi-, you know, community residents, people. At all the, you know, the, the uh, early voting. There's three early voting uh places, so it's a little bit more confined. But then the general election, what is it, twenty-four, twenty-five different polling places? But it's, my point is, it's gonna, there's gonna be a, a lot of people there. And I don't even know if we would be able to do anything at any of those polling places.
Is there anything in the electoral law that prevents you from putting something up as a county that says, hey, this is, we will, we are initiating this process? And uh, be, but you know, please be on the lookout for communications from the county concerning it. Is there anything that prevents us from doing it?
Probably is. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I would imagine there is too.
Yeah, I mean, there's electioneering zones and there's.
Yeah.
What, you can't wear this inside the polling.
Definitely um, definitely geographic boundaries that you're not allowed to do any form of any advertising for anything within um.
But that said, if you put something around the a hundred foot is the election, you know, you can't. Be inside that hundred foot line. And it can't be a line anymore, by the way. Somebody sued about that. But anyway.
Can't be.
You could put a sign up or signs at the polling places just about, you know. I don't know what, you know, just some general information.
I think personally, most people going into the polling place.
Got your blinders on.
Right, because you're bombarded with everything. They wouldn't even see a generic sign.
True. It'd be like. Static, cause you're just gonna have the rows of sign after sign after sign.
Well, that's why I say it just, you know, it's an opportunity where there's a lot of people.
Unfortunately, we don't know anybody who's, who's one of the judges who could just, when people walked in, say, hey, by the way, there's a.
You can get in front of a lot of people, you know, I'm just thinking.
I didn't hear that.
So what about some other um, oh, before we, well, I do want to get um other thoughts on. Small groups of people that we want to try to reach out to. So um. Yeah, let me stick on that question and, before I ask the other one. So are there groups that you think, are, you're particularly interested in hearing from? Because perhaps um, we don't often hear from them or um. Or there are uh, there are usually obstacles for them providing their input. The, the group that always comes to my mind are um, parents that have young kids. Who, for them to show up to an evening meeting, which is usually when our meetings are. It's really difficult. And so we don't often get um. Really good engagement from. That demographic, for instance. Are there other groups that you think um, we should try to make a, a special effort to reach out to? And provide some input to, to you all as we go through this process?
Well, there, there are two groups in, in the county that, you know, are the largest unincorporated um growth areas. The Finksburg Citizens Group. Uh, they have a group that, uh, was it the Ci- Finksburg Citizens Advisory or something like that? We should hear for, hear from them. And there's also the, the Freedom Area um Citizens Association. Freedom District Citizens Association, F T C A.
Maybe some of the police departments, just some officers just, you know. Or maybe you could even do fire and EMS with police or just do police and fire EMS, cause you know. Just kind of get a collection of officers from the Sheriff's Department, you know, City of Westminster, you know, Hampstead has police, Manchester has, you know what I mean?
Good.
What about medical, doctors, nurses?
The hospital.
Yeah.
That's good.
I think the hospital's kind of global, but if you narrow it down to the smaller groups. Sitting here looking at our attorney, um, they're never at a loss for.
Carroll County Bar Association would happily, would happily comment, I'm sure.
You could always call Clark.
Yeah, Schaefer's.
I already know, I already know what he's gonna say.
He is a, he's a, he's a wealth of history though, you know.
He is.
Thoughts. And, and he represents a lot of uh different interests.
His version.
His version, yeah. He wears many hats.
I think.
I think as well, another uh, another group that's always hard to, to reach are the, the young adults. Which we've actually had a fair amount of conversation already about this question of how are we maybe attracting and retaining young adults? And we've been talking about it a lot in terms of housing, um, but also, you know. What are the things that um people in that age group are looking for? It's a tough group to, to pin down, being the parent of two of them.
There's, what, how, is it eight high schools in the county? So there's eight high schools.
I think she's talking more, little older.
Yeah, folks who are kind of starting out on their.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you.
Their path and.
Okay.
Maybe thinking, just starting to think about where they might want to put down some roots, that kind of thing. So we've been kind of racking our brains about good ways to, to tap into that demographic.
Um, of course, on Facebook, but the kids or Snapchat and all of that stuff. So that might be a good venue to at least get it out to them and say, we're looking for some ideas. Can you contact and, and maybe have a peer that they can contact and then.
Yeah.
Tap into your children.
What about the.
They'll all find it.
Yeah, they can teach us how to do it.
What about the uh, the colleges? I mean, you've got like the community college and obviously you've got both uh.
McDaniel.
McDaniel as well, but you've got traditional and non-traditional students and you're gonna, you know, we had a uh. A, a meeting a few months back at the community college. And of course, one of the conversations was about uh. You know, young people staying in the community, economic growth. We're touching on a variety of things, and of course, which falls right into this. The biggest challenge is where do they live? If they can find a.
Right.
You know, functional job that will meet their needs and interests. Um, but I would think those areas would be good places to try as well. I mean, it gets a little tricky when you get outside of some of those. I don't really know if you're trying to hit a larger population.
Yeah.
Carroll always has their book fair. In the fall, not in the spring, like winter, spring. Might be a good place to have a little station.
Okay.
Cause you get, and you get young people, young adults, um, you know, parents, the whole gambit, plus the students.
I don't know. I've, I've been going to my granddaughter and grandson's uh. Sports games. And if you want to find young people, just get down to all the rec areas and hand out brochures. You'll get ninety-nine percent of the people in Carroll County. I mean, they're just packed on these bases.
You're absolutely right, cause the rec councils touch pretty much every.
Yeah, they do.
Every family in some variety. So that would, that's a good point.
Amazing how many people are involved in the, in the rec part of, you know. Soccer and football and you just keep, the list is longer every day.
Yep.
That's quite a demographic there, believe me.
Yeah.
And, and I think too, even for the younger people, it's just to stress the importance of this and how much their input is genuinely. You know, wanted. Because, you know, we, we are in, at least I feel like, it's just a very weird political place nationally, you know, statewide. And obviously for this being the ten-year plan, like, okay, you may be however, but this is, this is going to affect you in a lot of different ways. So just really trying to hammer home, like, we want your input across the board, but you know, we. We want you to stay in the county. So what do we have to do? What are things you want to be able to stay in the county? Because again, you know, we want obviously the revenue and everything to stay here, not go to Baltimore County, Baltimore City or Howard County, et cetera. Just stress the importance of, you know, just because you may be younger, like, your opinion is genuinely. You know, and I know for me, being a millennial and elder millennial, like, cause my owner sent me to class on this, like, so much what really. That sinks in with especially my generation is the, okay, so we're doing this and this is the why. And this getting people essentially to relate to the why. And, and that's what really kind of gets it to sink in. With them, not, okay, well, this is what we want. Okay, well, this is why we want it or the, you know, and. Really getting them to, okay, attach to it. And once they attach to it, they're gonna be incredibly involved in it. But they just have to know that. You know, your, your why, your reasons matter and they're, they're being considered, you know, or taken into account or whatever you want to call it.
You know. It occurs to me that if, if you had a um, I forget what you, it's not a barcode, the thing that you hold your phone up to and.
QR code.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm fried. So if you came up with something that um. Communicated what it is you're doing, what it is we're doing, and the information you're looking for. And you could put that at schools, football games, programs, you know, the rec councils, like you're saying, and everybody could use their phone. Whether you're young, you're old, that might be, cause you know, the, the, the issue we have. When we send out communications to employees of the companies I work with is, it's all junk mail. And even though it's a benefit to them to, to read what it is we're sending out, but if you give it to them in, in different forms. Some people like print, some people like email, some people will go to the county website and do what it is you're asking, but you know, a lot of people won't. But if you give them something that they can look at on their phone, that's just another way to do it, Daphne. And so um, that might be a pervasive way, cause you could put that at schools, you could. When you think of all the different ways the county has the ability to access people. You know, even if it's an, an insert in their water sewer bill, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know if we have, if we have the ability to do that. To put something, just a flyer in there that says, hey, you know, you want to know what's going on with the planning ma-, the County Master Plan? It's being revised. Click here, bam. And you, you can get an update, you know. Uh, so I, I don't know if that would work, but um. Everybody else seems to be doing it.
Yeah, those are definitely things that we can look into.
I'll give you two other quick ones that just came to mind. Um, our senior centers. So I don't know if there's any way to incorporate them in some fashion. And then the other would be the uh, public library if we could team up with them. Because you've got such a heavy volume of the population going to both those two, you know, types of entities.
Good.
And you're hitting demographics that may not be at something else. We're covering our bases better, I think, the one, looking at those two.
I mean, the public libraries is great, cause I know my wife takes our uh, little girl to the Hampstead Library and especially in, in the wintertime. Um, in the afternoon. And she said, I mean, it's usually packed. Of, of course, like you said, with the, you know, the parents that may be staying home with the children and stuff like that or whatnot. So even if it was like a daytime, you know, session, you know what I mean, or hey, we'll have it at the library, the kids can go do storytime, we want to hear from you. You know, that might be a good way to, like you said, to, to reach the, the parents, cause obviously nighttime is hard to get out, so.
Yeah, definitely tabling at different um locations where we know there are gonna be people. Passing by and, and we can engage them at whatever level they're comfortable with. Are the kinds of ideas that we want to generate and then we can follow up on them. Um, okay, well, this is certainly not going to be our last opportunity to um. Make suggestions. And, and this can even be something that's sort of an ongoing thing. So if you think of any um, any groups that you want us to make in a special effort to reach out to. Or um, events that you think would be really good for us to show up at, please let me know. And we'll try to get that on the calendar and sets, set some of those conversations up. I also just wanted to highlight under that same two point four. A suggestion that we look at pulling together some targeted work groups. How we do that is sort of TBD, but I think we, we have two studies that the county has paid for. And we want to be able to use the wisdom that has um, uh, come out of those. So the Economic Development and Land Use Study that was completed about a year ago or a little less than a year ago. And then the upcoming Housing Study, which you'll hear a presentation on at the beginning of November. Both of those had a, a lot of information or will have a lot of information in them. Um, as well as I think some, um, some recommendations. I think what we want to do is um. Gather some folks together to dig into those studies. And uh, and say which of the recommendations contained in here are things that we want to try to advance as part of the master plan. If I recall the EDLU correctly, I think it, it didn't necessarily say, here's the one path that you should, you should take. But it had a whole bunch of different um, different scenarios or options that could yield different results. I think the next step is to take that study and say, based on this and what we know from other sources. These are the things that we think are gonna be the most effective to advance our um, our goals for economic development. So that's another suggestion that I had. And we may have one or two other um, really targeted groups that need to dig in deep. Onto, in certain, certain areas. Uh, so I want to get your thoughts on something like that.
Do you think that's an outside uh work group or an internal uh work group?
That's a good question. It could be internal, but we may have a fair number of people who have expertise in some of these areas. That could help with that um analysis. It's sort of up to you guys. Okay.
Any, anything further?
Well, I guess um. Maybe. Yeah, let me just walk through this very, very quickly, um, sort of line by line, if you will. And um, if there's anything that you all have questions or um comments about, I just want to be able to give you the opportunity to. To flag those. Otherwise, we can um, we can proceed with the work plan. Um, that we have here with some of these additional ideas about collaborating with the towns and um. Doing some specific outreach to these different groups. and, um, doing some specific outreach to these different groups. Um, so just very quickly, we have on the, this, um, one point O, communication and branding. Uh, we are working on developing a, a logo. We got some initial feedback from you guys at the, um, joint work session on things that really said master plan to you. And, um, Chris Swam is going to be working on some kind of, something that'll be identifiable, um, so that people, when they see it, think master plan and know what, whatever, uh, that's associated with relates to. Um, we're also in the process of, uh, setting up a dedicated website that we can put, um, uh, materials and, um, events and that kind of thing out there for people to take a look at. We hope to be able to, um, launch that on October seventeenth. October is National Community Planning Month. Yay! Um, and so we're actually, um, going in, uh, in front of the commissioners for a proclamation celebrating National Community Planning Month, as well as this year is our sixtieth anniversary of our county master plan. Seems like a, an auspicious time to also launch officially into this new, um, planning update, uh, process. So that's when we hope to unveil the, um, the website as well. Um, and, and then we'll also be working with our communication folks on, um, social media engagement. So that's kind of a, a key piece of that output. Um, and then of course, um, doing things like designing and, and posting maybe interactive maps that we can drive people to, to get some feedback from them, um, online, as well as when we have in-person events. Um, we already have this, uh, sort of pop-up booth that I described for you that we can take out to events and, and, um, have deployed wherever we need it. Um, and then of course, the other output piece is just our planned documents, the, the typical things that you would see, both in written format as well as digital. On the next phase is, or, or the next part of this is on our consultations. So you see different ways to, um, engage with the Board of County Commissioners, some of those, uh, things we've already done. But then we also will have, um, I think, regular opportunities to update the commissioners on where things are going and, um, make sure that they feel like they're kept in the loop of, on things. Um, and of course, uh, there will be periodic joint work sessions like we just had, and, um, time for them to review and, and adopt the plan. Um, similar set of meetings with you guys, although, um, your main, um, work will be done at our twice monthly meetings, um, and you see that down in, um, what is that? Two point, two point four. Um, we talked about the, the different, um, committee meetings and focus group meetings. I think we also touched on some of the informal input, um, options that we can explore. The backside of that, um, work plan are the public meetings and hearings that we're, um, required to hold. So I think we'd like to try to do some periodic, um, open houses to get folks just kind of, uh, broadcast. Um, if you're interested in providing feedback on the master plan, on this particular, um, phase of the master plan, we'll have some open houses when people can just sort of drop in and provide that, um, in a large group format. And then we have, of course, our sixty-day review and, and required public hearings. Um, and then the last part of the work plan talks about our different phases from our background data that we're, um, that we're on the tail end of collecting and will share out with you in the, in the coming, um, months. Um, that includes, uh, a bunch of data, um, some what we call topics and trends briefs. So these are, um, things that are circulating out there, um, in the world that, that may have an influence on the master plan and, and the types of recommendations that you might want to consider. And then as well, any, um, existing plans, we want to make sure that we're rolling into the master plan if they are supporting documents. So for instance, the Water and Sewer Master Plan, the Water Resources Element, um, the Transportation Master Plan, those are all pieces of, uh, the county master plan, and we want to make sure everybody's sort of up to speed on those, um, because those are separate documents, but they are going to be, need to be reflected in the master plan as well. And then the last part of this, which is the bulk of our, um, uh, spreadsheet to the right, are the different, um, different discussions that we'll need to have to really kind of develop recommendations in the plan. Um, so once we've taken our existing conditions, we've gotten some good feedback, we've got to do something with all of that. And that, that's, that translation into specific recommendations that kind of make up the body of the plan. Okay, I think I've touched on everything on here. So with that, I'll ask if there are any particular questions, anything that stands out to you as things that you might want to change or not want to see on here? Anything you think is missing?
I, I think it's pretty comprehensive. Um, what do you see as the final timeline?
Well, we have a very ambitious schedule that takes us to about this time next year. That's assuming we stay right on task with everything. Um, and I will just say, at the outset, some of this, well, it's all subject to change based on things like, maybe we're trying to schedule meetings with, with the towns, and we just can't get it done for a month or two after when we would hope, and we don't want to go any further with things until we have those discussions. That could kind of, um, uh, force us to sort of pu- push pause on some of these pieces. Um, but I do really want to kind of keep things rolling along as best we can. Um, so, yeah, super ambitious schedule would be about a year from now. Um, but we, we'll see how, how, uh, how things play out as we try to put all these pieces into, into place.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, um, we're gonna start diving in at the October fifteenth meeting. So my hope is that most of our evening meetings will be master plan focused, unless we have to, um, unless we have to add an, uh, an item to the agenda. Um, but then I also would like to be able to add on to the daytime meetings at least one master plan related, related thing, so we can continue to make progress on it. That'll all sort of depend on what else is on the agenda, because that's the, the primary business meeting. But, um, but expect to see something each meeting unless they're extenuating circumstances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Public? Please.
Uh, good evening. Yes, John, John Breeding with, I don't know if that's on, John Breeding with the Town of Mount Airy. Um, I was just wanted to, uh, applaud you for moving through this. And my one recommendation is possibly a mass mailing, uh, with a QR code on it might be, uh, uh, an option. And also a rack card, uh, might be a great option. And I think with meeting with the towns, I think that the, the pre-questions are a great, um, asset for the towns to be able to understand what we're looking for, what you're looking for. And I think meeting either with a teams meeting possibly, uh, might be advantageous to everybody. And, uh, I think, uh, council chair, the planning commission chair, the mayor, and possibly the planning director, whomever. So that's my, my thoughts.
Good idea.
Thank you. Okay, um, any other general public comment? Okay, hearing nine, then we're at number nine.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn. I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.